We'll call this meeting of the Freeman School Board to order. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go ahead.
Elaine.
Yes.
David.
Here.
Katie.
Yep.
Chris.
Yes.
Cody.
Next item on the agenda will be the approval of the agenda. I don't believe there are any amendments. So I will require a motion to approve the agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Cody. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by David. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, conflict of interest disclosures. I received none.
None.
Public input?
None.
Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Will require a motion to approve the following. The minutes of the regularly scheduled school working of October 14th, 2025. The minutes of the special Corn Belt Cooperative Meeting of October 7th, 2025. The minutes of the Corn Belt Cooperative Board of Advisors Meeting on October 15th, 2025, financial reports and claims. Do I have a motion? Motion by David. Do I have a second?
Second. Chris got it.
I think Chris got me. Yeah, Chris got you. Second by Chris. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, administrative report, starting with Ellen.
It was a little lengthy, but I was not here in November, so, or in October, so. Okay. Students, congrats to our elementary student council. They were chosen, so they are on the back there. You can see who was chosen to be a part of the student council. Congrats to Hudson Bookman for being chosen as the 2025 Lions Club Peace Poster Contest Winner, and also Adeline Ashmeyer as the winner of. Student council sold over 200 bouquets grams. So it was kind of our first fundraiser trial. It did really well. They put those all together and we delivered those. It was really great. So thanks to all who purchased those from us. Excellent job to our student council and our flight crew. They ran that football concession seamlessly. It was perfect. We checked the inventory before and after, and they were almost spot on on everything. So it was great. Girls on the Run did an excellent job at their 5K. We ran that on November 1st, so that was fun. Halloween Stations and Halloween Costume Parade went well. In the high school gym on Halloween. For the school, parent teacher conferences went well. Our turnout on the elementary end is almost 100%. So just maybe a few kids here and there, parents here and there missing, but for the most part, everybody shows up. CSET meeting, we went over the data. We set new goals. Our official targeted school improvement designation is for English learners in the elementary, so we will be on that for the quickest you can get office in the next two years. So this year, we spend time creating the team, coming up with a plan. Next year, implementing the plan. And then year three, they'll check the data again. If you're off, you're off. If you're not, you continue, so. Four Square, Hopscotch, Pickleball Lines, those were all painted on the playground. We celebrated National Custodian Day, so we want to say thanks to Shannon and Heston. We celebrated National School Lunch Week, so a big thanks to Dev and the crew for their fun lunches that week. We posted those online as well for you guys to see. We want to thank Pipestone and Hillside Enterprises for donating $1,000 to our sack pack program. That money does go directly to Bethany, to the sack pack program, but it does benefit our students. We get 30 sack packs every week for students at the school, so that's good. We participated in the South Dakota Crunch Off, so thanks to Catalin, Remy, and Angelique for setting that up, and then also to SNS Ag for continuing that crunch off with free popcorn at that football game. Our title team traveled to Pierre last week for two days, so that is Rebecca Peterson, Alexis Robertson, and Anna Cortez. So they traveled there, just learned about reinforcements about Title, Title I and Title III, what that looks like, some things we may need to update, but for the most part, they felt like we were doing a really good job based on what was presented, so that's good to hear. And then two of our colony teachers also traveled to Pleasant Valley Colony in Flandrew for a colony teacher's share session, just to kind of figure out what they're doing, what we're doing, you know, share how you can create new ideas. And their takeaway was that we are also doing things very well at our colonies. They were impressed with what we were doing, so that was good, too. We completed our fall Title III check-in with Tanya Vitak from the consortium. That went well. We just kind of look at what we have, and then we send all that stuff to the state for them to look back for. Titles, so we just did our plan last year, so we're pretty good there. And then I want to say thank you to the Conodals and our third graders and our student council today for helping with our Veterans Day program. It went really well, and happy Veterans Day.
Katie.
High school principal report. Right. So we've kind of had a quite a busy month here. Just to start out with our FFA, they have their Fall Carnival. Took place on the 24th, as well as the Pops concert. They did, the kids did an amazing job at that concert, so just a big thank you to our two instructors on that, Sonia and Ivana, for all their hard work in getting the students ready for that, so it was great. On the 28th, ACTs were taken. We did have five juniors and seniors that did participate in that. Allstate Chorus took place on 11/1, which included Tannen, Cadence, Jocelyn, and Liam, and all students in the state did a wonderful job. It's probably one of the best concerts I've ever been to, so. 11/5, the Oral and Terp Group performed at Districts in Mitchell. Students who will be advancing to the regions in Mitchell on 11/24 is Thor in nonoriginal oratory and humorous, Jocelyn, Lee in poetry, and then Claire Luthborough in storytelling. On the 6th, our FFA did the Jack Rabbit LDE, which 11 students partook in that. Results included Ethan, he got fourth in the Ag Broadcasting. Remy, Remington, seventh in Prepared Public Speaking. Jackson, he took eighth in Creed Speaking as, and then as a group. Jenna, Kendall, Maddie, Kenzie, Hannah, Penny, and Addison got 12th in the Chapter of Conduct Meeting, and then Reese Lynn also got 19th in Employment Skills. Our volleyball team had a great season this year. They did end that on 11/7. And then, of course, football, we are going to the Dome on the 13th, and we will be having a pep rally at 2:00. Upcoming, SDSU is going to have a Precision Ag Event take place here in Freeman at the school from 1:00 to 3:30. This will include students from Marion, and there should be a total of 50 to 60 students that will be attending.
Superintendent Report.
For all the reasons that the principals just mentioned, there is just a lot of excitement in the year, and I think the students probably agree with that. It's been just a fun, really fun energy in the last couple of weeks that we've had with the success of all of our athletic programs and activities. I don't know if I've ever been part of a school district that has had the level of success in everything that we're doing. It's just awesome to be a part of it. Huge compliments to our students that are contributing to that, and our coaching staff, and everybody that's involved in our athletic programs. On a more boring note, snow removal requests have been posted for bids, so they, we had one that came in for that one, so that was a celebration when we get one. Construction CM at ours, Construction Manager at Risk, those requests have been posted as well. We had a little bit of a mix-up with the paper that we needed it posted for two times, and it only got posted once legally. You have to have it two consecutive until 10 days after the first post, so that's why the implications for that are leading to later on in the meeting, we'll discuss the heading of a board meeting in the last week of November. That'll give us that 10 days, as long as it's on Monday or later, and we'll meet all those bid requirements. Good news is, it'll be out there. There's no reason why we shouldn't get full exposure for that and get as many. Hopefully, we'll get one, start with one, but hopefully we get some more action on that one. We'll have a regular school day this Thursday, so with the game being at 7:00, gives us plenty of time to be able to finish your school. Team's taking off at 3:30. We'll have a Pet Fest will be at 2:00 in the main gym for them to come in and enjoy that as well. And then the fan bus, we're looking at having a fan bus if we have enough participants in the fan bus. Fan bus is scheduled to leave at a little bit before 5:00. I think I put 4:50 on the list, just to make sure kids are here. If we leave at 5:00, it's about an hour, just over an hour of the Dome, so that'll give us plenty of time to get there and get tickets if they haven't done so already.
Question on that fan bus. I heard the cutoff was tomorrow. There's no school tomorrow, so should that be extended?
That got it, yep. That got adjusted, oversight on my part for forgetting that it's a holiday and nobody's going to be here tomorrow, so we put in the announcements today that it'll be a new cutoff on Wednesday.
Gotcha, okay.
Fan bus will be, depending on if we have enough, what we'll do is, we'll look at taking a van, 14-passenger van, if there, or the mini, if there's a smaller number, but we want to definitely provide an opportunity for any students that are wanting to go. It has been brought to my attention that we need, we have a couple of board members that are not able to make the December meeting, so just to give the board a heads-up that with December being that crazy holiday time and family stuff going on for multiple weekends, wanted to give you guys a advance notice that that regularly scheduled December 8th board meeting will have to be changed. So the thought process is that we mention that tonight, give you a chance to go back to your calendars, talk to your families, discuss what dates would work for you, and then in that, during that alternate board meeting, or the special board meeting that we'll have that last week of November, we can approve that meeting in December, the adjustment of the date for that meeting in December, so just giving you advance notice for that. Very excited to mention that we have all of the board permanent displays reserved, and we're starting to build on the list of the electric version advertisements that are posted on there. So if you remember back when we first discussed this project, the main ones, the four advertisements are going to be on the two scoreboards on that side of the gym. The stage side of the gym, those four advertisements spaces in itself paid for the board. We've already paid for the board, plus the rest of the ads are fundraising dollars that will go back into our athletic programs and activities. We've got five additional ones on this side that they're sold. They're, people have committed, and so we'll have some revenues that'll go into our athletic programs and activities, so that's very, very exciting. And then the more that we can fill, it's unlimited for the $1,000 ads that are the electronic ones, so the more that we can sell for that, that's just more icing on the cake for more money that'll go back into our programs. So very excited to report on that one. That's all I have.
Unfinished business, none. New business, the school board will hold a discussion about students attending the State Student Council Convention.
Welcome.
Well, on behalf of our student council, we just wanted to say thank you for letting us come and present to you all tonight about the opportunity for attending the State Student Council Convention, which will be held in Rapid City on March 31st and April 1st of next year. So just a little bit of background before I get you into what the state convention really is. So as a student council, our main job right now is to mostly host homecoming. So we decide the theme for the parade, we decide the dress-up days for Homecoming Week, and then we host the Homecoming Olympics for the 7-12 student body. And so we went to the James River Regional Conference, which is our conference for student council, and that was the first time that we had ever gone to that. And when I say that our students came back so excited and so eager to get more involved and to start implementing new things, like that is an understatement. I was so overwhelmed and happy with how excited they were when we reconvened after our trip. It was, it was overwhelming for me, so I was really, really happy with that, and as their advisor, it made me really excited to then take them to this opportunity and to gain more excitement and to do more things with our entire student body with their health. So the James River region as a whole, there were 12 different schools that participated, and of those 12 schools, there are 10 that currently participate in the state convention right now. The only two who don't participate are us and Howard. And in talking with the advisors there, Howard is also working with their administration right now to then hopefully take their students to the state convention. So hopefully, this year, all the schools that participated in the region will be able to attend the state convention. While we were in Mitchell, the kids listened to a keynote speaker for about an hour. They broke into five 15-minute breakout sessions where they did different things. So first was making hope cards, which is for a local nonprofit in Mitchell, and they, those hope cards go to students who are dealing with mental health and to just spread kindness and to give them a little bit of encouragement with their struggles. The second thing they learned about was with parliamentary procedure. They also learned about running for region board, which we now have some students that are interested in doing, and there are only two schools right now that participate on that region board, so getting Freeman on that board would be really exciting. They met with different students from different schools and gained new ideas and perspectives about things that we could implement in our school. And then there was also a breakout session where they just learned about meeting new people and communication skills and how to better connect with others, so that was really exciting for them. There was a detailed timeline that was attached in your agenda packet. Was everyone able to see that? Otherwise, I do have paper copies if anyone can see that. So the first thing is that the convention itself takes place on Tuesday, the 31st, and then it ends on Wednesday, April 1st. So that would mean that we would need to leave on Monday, the 30th. So we would leave probably after fourth period, would kind of be my plan, and then we would be gone for that half of a school day, which would put us in Rapid at roughly 4:00. The convention itself starts on Tuesday at 9:00 a.m. The session ends then at 8:00 p.m. with a banquet and an award ceremony, and then there are activities for students that run from 8:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. On Wednesday morning, it starts at 8:00 a.m., and then it convenes at 11:30. It concludes at 11:30, so then that would bring us home at around 5:00 o'clock our time, and then students would be able to go to school on Thursday and be back for those and Friday classes of that week. So with new student opportunities, there are, there's always some money that needs to be involved, right? So the student council, we would take on some of that financial responsibility. We have to be a part of the South Dakota Student Council Association in order to attend the state event, and so that is a $60 yearly due. So we, as a council, we would take that on, and then we would also pay for our student registration fees. So that is about 50, that this year is $55 per student. I would take 11 of my students, so that bill for us would be just over $600. What we would like the district to help us with is with transportation, hotel rooms, and then for food for our students. So transportation, hopefully, we could either take the 14-passenger van, or we could take two Suburbans, either way. And then hotel rooms, we would hopefully stay at the Doubletree, which is attached to the monument in Rapid City, and then we wouldn't have to transport each morning, so we would just be able to walk over into the convention space, and then we wouldn't have to rely on breakfast either, because they have a continental breakfast for our students. And then hopefully, we would be able to get some sort of meal allowance for the kids, and we would only need food for our two travel days. The convention does supply food for that entire day on Tuesday, so we would only need one meal for Wednesday, and then one meal for, or for Monday when we leave, and then Wednesday when we would return. That's kind of what we're asking for in terms of help from the district. So with that, I will let my three representatives talk about why they would like to attend the state convention.
We'll just introduce ourselves. My name's Claire Luthborough, and I'm the junior class president.
My name's Laura Onison, and I'm the senior class president.
And I'm Tannen Alk, and I'm the vice president of the student council.
Okay, so these are some reasons why we think we should be able to attend. So it's really important for us to go to the state convention to be able to run for region board. To run for region board, you have to go to the state convention, and you get preference points. And we have people on student council that are interested in running on this, for this region board, so that would be really good to go to state, so that we get those preference points and are eligible to run.
Another thing is to gain some new ideas for just activities throughout the school. When we went to the James River thing, we figured out that we weren't as involved as maybe some other schools, and so the, some other student councils gave us some good ideas, and yeah, they gave us some good ideas of stuff we can do instead of just running for homecoming. We could find stuff to do before Christmas or in the month of February where it gets really hard on the students, so yeah.
It's also a huge resume builder. I've been applying for colleges, and I've been applying for scholarships, and these guys are going to do that next year, and all of us are going to have to do it at some point. This looks so good on those applications to be, to show that we're involved, that we're really interested in being a part of our school and being a part of extracurriculars outside of our school, and just making an impact in the greater South Dakota area.
Another thing is the workshops at the region board were so good. We had a keynote speaker, she was really good. She had a really good story, and she was really influential, and it really meant a lot to us. And the hope cards, that was really fun to do, and even just talking to those other students, that was really helpful, just to see what they have to say, and like Tannen said, give us more ideas for what we could do. So going to state would really help us, like, build more relationships with those other student council students and give us more ideas for what we can do here.
Another thing would be participating in the SDHSA initiative, and so the initiative for this year that the South Dakota High School Association is trying to like, like signify is sportsmanship, so they're trying to like, improve sportsmanship at games, make it a better environment for others. And so by going to state, we could get involved in some awards for our school, and yeah.
This could really help us increase involvement within the school. By doing that initiative that Tannen mentioned, we can win many awards for our student council, and that also looked good on resumes, such as the Outstanding Student Council, the Allstate Student Council Members for Seniors, the Outstanding Student Council Administrator, which would be Mrs. Harberts, and the Outstanding Administrator, which we could nominate from the school. And so it would be to drum up interest in school activities and just make the students here more involved and want to be here more, and make the school a better place for everybody.
And another thing we learned at the region thing, and that we would learn more about at state, is how to be on boards, like how parliamentary procedure and all of that type of stuff, because before we went, we weren't really aware all of the stuff that you should be doing for student council. Like, there's a lot of things that we just weren't aware of, because we never had the opportunity to go to these things. So we think it'd be really beneficial if we could go to state, so that we could learn more about how we could be better as a student council and as a district. Thank you.
So with that, thank you guys again for letting us present, and we would like to answer whatever questions you have for us.
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. So you guys went to James Valley, but that wasn't the regional board, or that was?
So we're, we went to Mitchell, and we're in, we're in the James River region.
Oh, okay, so the regional board you guys have been a part of, or you're trying?
This was our first year that we.
So this was the first year. So what's the function of that? It's the workshops that you did and things like that, and then to be able to go to the state, correct?
So then, the, the goal is to hopefully get some of our younger kids on those region boards and get comfortable within that, and then they could run for state boards during their sophomore, junior year. It's kind of that profession we're hoping to see.
Okay, thanks.
Other question, discussions? I love it. I think it's great. I'm going to ask that you all run for the school board when you're adults, so I can retire? No. No, I think it's, I mean, for all the reasons that you really highlighted, and it seems like a great opportunity to build really those highly transferable skills, I think, I think it's a great idea. I think a great opportunity, too.
Yeah, I think it's fantastic.
You guys did an awesome job.
Kudos. You're well done.
Really well done.
I should always tell you for looking for more to do for the school.
Right. I'd be in favor of, I mean, supporting from a financial standpoint.
Yep.
Can I second?
I don't think that we need, oh, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll move on to that. Okay, any other further discussions? Sorry, speaking of parliamentary procedure, we move on to the next agenda item first. Any other questions before we close that out? All right, wonderful.
I'll just point out that with that motion, this is approving for this next, this year and future.
And to follow it, yeah.
Because when you build a program like this, you'd want it to be sustainable, and the success in the future is hopefully going to come when you start, start building it, so.
That sounds great. Awesome. If there's no further discussion, I'll require a motion to approve adding the State Student Council Convention to the list of activities offered for Freeman High School students. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by David. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Katie. All in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. The school board will hear an update from the Facilities and Grounds Committee.
So I mentioned in my report that we had the need for an additional meeting. Thanks for coming in.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, everybody.
Need for an additional board meeting to, to be able to approve the RFPs and the bids for snow removal, and then to determine what we are going to select for moving for December, so I guess the discussion then would be what are some dates that work for the board to add that special board meeting.
And you're looking at the week of Thanksgiving, correct? Would, would this be enough time?
Yep, so it has to be, yeah, later, Monday or later.
Okay.
Last week in November.
So we're looking at 24, 25, 26.
24, 25, seems like that would be the further away from Thanksgiving, so it might be easier for people to time.
I'm free either of those days.
I'm also.
I think I'm okay. 24, 25, that'll be all. Yeah, and either day should work. I don't have the calendar. There, so it's like.
Yes. Does anybody prefer Monday over, Monday night over Tuesday night, or vice versa?
Tuesday night, now that I'm, you asked that, Tuesday night would be a fireman's meeting.
Okay, so maybe aim for Monday.
Yeah.
Just got to double-check. Boys basketball. Yeah, they have boys' basketball. Oh, but that's early enough in the evening, doesn't matter. Okay, so Monday, it is?
7:00. Stick with 7:00, we couldn't adjust the time due. That works better.
7:00 works great for me. Anybody else? Monday, November 24th, right?
Mm-hmm.
Sure, I have the date. All right. Then we'll require a motion to approve the special board meeting on Monday, November 24th, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. here in the high school library. Do I have a motion? Motion by Cody. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Chris. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, the school board will hold a discussion about the legal counsel that is provided for the district. Jake and I, I think both, probably myself first, received some correspondence from our current legal representation, Sam Kerr, and he is going to be retiring. And so in that part of a transition plan to ensure that we, you know, continue to be well represented, and he did mention as well that, you know, the number of law firms and attorneys that are currently interested in and involved in representing districts is, is quite limited within, within the state, and so he did, you know, on, on behalf of our district, look for someone that would be, you know, a good, a good fit for our district, as well as qualified to represent our district, and so he's, he recommended that Nicole Moaning from Cutler Law Firm, they're located in Sioux Falls, so actually closer law firm to us as well. Sam was in Rapid City, and so this would be, you know, distance-wise closer as well, but recommended that we utilize her services to represent the district through Cutler Law Firm, and that he would be willing to go ahead and, you know, get her up to speed on, on everything currently with the district, et cetera, at no additional cost to the district, so we'd be able to spend time with her in transitioning everything over to ensure that there's no lapse in, in coverage.
I was able to have a conversation with Nicole, and she just introduced herself and, and talked a little bit about her resume, and she has been a teacher before, and she comes from a long line of educators, or many people in her family that have been educators. She said she would be kind of the point contact for Cutler Law, but they have an advantage to this. It'd be similar to what Sam offered. Sam was very much a one-person, one-man shop, so we would get that feel, but Cutler also has 21 other attorneys that work for the company, so she would be the liaison for us to determine which of the other attorneys the commission should be going to. So that's a huge advantage for us, just for having that many attorneys working within our organization.
She also provided her cell number to meet tonight as well, should we, should the board have any questions for her? She said she'd be more than happy to take a phone call in, if there's any questions. I also had a chance to chat with her today, and I don't have any opposition to approving them as represented for, for the district as legal counsel for the remainder of this school year. And then that would be something that then in July, just like with everything else, that we would revisit every year, so it would just be for the remainder of this year due to Sam's retirement. Any questions or discussion?
Nope.
Okay. There's no further discussion. We'll require a motion to approve designating Cutler Law Firm to represent the district as legal counsel for the remainder of the 2025-2026 school year. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Chris, do I have a second?
Second.
Katie's got it.
Katie's got it, all right. Second by Katie, all in favor, say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, the school board will hold a discussion about the district's certificate of deposit CD investment renewal.
We got a letter from the Merchant State Bank saying that our certificate is to renew on November 12th, so we have a, the amount is $407,000 and $712. And so we have a couple of different options. You can either renew the CD, so there's a six-month term at 3.2%, or the 12-month term at 3.55%. The only thing is, we can't withdraw those early because there's penalties. So the other option is a money market, but that interest rate is only like 1.5%, and then, for our general fund, we have a 2.5% right now. So the question is if we want to stick the money in there for a portion of time, or go into the, just in case we want to act with anything for the new projects coming up.
Your thoughts?
I go back and forth, just, I'm just starting to re, or like, know a little bit about the stadium project, so I wouldn't be opposed to doing, well, the six-month one would be done in April, and if we're gonna start the stadium around May, so we could do that for a little higher interest rate for six months, or just do the general fund.
I think it'd be wise to do the six-month option.
I think so, too. If, if there's no, yeah, exactly. If there's no downside, really, and, you know, we're not gonna need to withdraw that early, I think that that's really reasonable.
And we can talk about it then and see, when we get a contractor in, what our thoughts are, too.
You don't gain much by going to 12.
No.
No. No. Yeah, I agree.
I don't know if that would-
An action, I was just gonna say, we probably need to-
I'm not sure what the direction the board would go.
I, I think-
If it was necessary for an action.
I think I would, because there was discussion and, and we designated, I think we should have a motion to approve the, the six-month term for the CD at the annual percentage yield of 3.2%. Do I have a motion to approve our current certificate of deposit for reinvestment into a six-month term of annual percentage yield of 3.2%?
Oh, motion.
Motion by Katie, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Cody, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. All right, next item on the agenda, school board will hold a discussion about amending the 2025-2026 school year calendar.
Well, this came about, we brought to our cabinet meeting the science of reading, the desire to bring a team of teachers to, in service to discuss that, and Katie, feel free to add anything if you feel that we need to get into the details of that. What we needed to, based off of them coming back from that, that professional development opportunity, was that they were on board with it, and that this is, this is something that we had to do. It's something that's getting momentum nationwide, and it's just, it's, it's hard to understand that, you know, we've been teaching reading for as long as we have, and now they're saying we've been doing it wrong all along, and Katie would be able to speak to that more than I can. I've just heard it, I haven't seen it in action, so, you know, take a minute or two and just explain what that science of reading is all about.
I wouldn't say we're teaching it wrong, I would just say that we're not using best practice.
Okay.
Right? So it's like, if I'm a roofer and I, I could still use a hammer, and I'm gonna get the job done, but it's gonna take me twice as long, right? Why wouldn't I use what's improved? Same for, same for medicine, takes forever to get it to you, but once it's there, it's, it's amazing. So I think that's the same thing when it comes to the science of reading. It's, it's analyzing what we've been using for years, and maybe what is best. An explicit instruction is best. Right now, we're using more of a balanced literacy approach, and that hasn't been shown to be successful, right? That's why we get seventh and eighth graders who can't read, and we're doing everything we can, we're putting them in title, and we're pulling them out, and we're doing all the things, but how we're teaching it isn't necessarily best practice. So it's not that teachers, we haven't been taught the best way to do it, and there are new ways, and there are best ways. And so if, there are a few states who have piloted statewide and have seen really, really big success. So South Dakota is just doing what South Dakota does, very slow. So they do, South Dakota does have a literacy framework that they would like schools to kind of jump into, but it's kind of like, here it is if you'd like to do it, right? And we did go to the literacy conference back in June, and learned a lot about the science of reading and the success that it's having, and Lexi Robertson is very self-taught on it. She just graduated from college. If this gives you any perspective, she just graduated, right? She's in her second year of teaching. She learned nothing about the reading, the science of reading in college. So colleges are not catching up yet, not all. So, but she is struggling with dyslexia, and so she has learned a lot about it, and learned a lot about the science of reading to help students, and she's doing amazing. And I don't even know how to best explain it, but that's why we, I reached out to Compass, which is a company that came to the literacy conference. They do go into schools and help schools, and I just asked, how can we get this in front of our staff so our staff can all be on the same page and we can start doing some of these things? And our staff are doing some of these things because they went to the literacy conference, too, but it's just not real uniform at this point. And I feel like the best way to do that is through professional development that we put in front of them and give them a day to do. Because if you say, hey, I need you to get this done, then it's not being done consistent, because we don't have time, right? So providing that time, I think, is important, and I do think over time, it will improve our reading scores. And right now, our reading scores is, they're not the best. And I don't know, when I help students with math, too, where do they struggle? Reading problems. I, like, like, I do think we need just some better practice there. So there are three, there are four total components that, that it will go over. We'll start with the basics of what is the science of reading? It'll go over the reading rope, what all those components are. It'll then go over assessments, what those are, and so we need, I believe it's a total of six days, but we'll put two for next year and then four for this year to get through some of those, and hopefully get teachers excited and motivated to go to, to get rolling with it.
From there, we determined as cabinet, we needed the four days now, and then we'd allocate next, during service, fall in service, that we would do the other two days leading into next school year. I took, then took that to the Calendar Committee, and shared with them that this is what we're looking at doing. Where do you recommend converting our current schedule into professional development days? And what you see on, for the second semester, starting in January, the days that are blue were the ones that were adjusted. So the second was already a day, but we've, so a lot of this has already been in place, we just reallocated the professional development to this. Staff felt, the Calendar Committee felt that staff needed a half-day to be able to prep for that second semester. So that, the second will be a half-day, the other half will be prepping for second semester. That was already a full day, that was built into the schedule. And then we also had Flyer Fridays that were already built into the schedule. We'll still do the remediation in the morning, we'll just shift the PD in the afternoon to focus on the science of reading. Were already built into the schedule, so nothing changed with that. We did adjust the 12th of February, that was the two days of conferences, and we had for a student contact day, we had in the morning up until noon, and then conferences from 12 to 6. What we're going to do is, the morning would be, students get the full day, no, no student contact day on the 12th, the morning would be the professional development, and then the afternoon, excuse me, would be the conferences. The elementary teachers felt that they needed that time, that time is important to meet with those parents, so we couldn't, we couldn't adjust the conferences much. We can adjust a little bit, but they need that time. So the morning will be PD for staff, the afternoon be conferences, and since we're going up till noon for the PD, we, we'd start conferences at 1, so staff get a chance to reset their brains for conferences and prep for conferences and eat lunch. And then the 6 was one that was switched. The 2nd, which would be prior to the Easter break, was added in there, and I think our students and families would actually appreciate that one if they do decide to do any travel in the springtime or take any family vacations, they have one more day available to do that. And then the final Flyer Friday afternoon adjusted that was already built in the schedule on the 17th of April. We cannot touch the May 1st date because that's what we do, the music festival, so that one had to stay as-is. But all those added up, between half-days and full-days, lead into the four days that we've needed to accomplish this, and that was, basically it was building most of it within our current schedule, just adding a, a half-day here, a full-day there. I'm sure it was the same, though.
I think it sounds important. So, any other questions or discussion? There's no further discussion, we'll require a motion to approve the amended 2025-2026 school year calendar. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by David, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Chris, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, the school board will hold a discussion about the continuous school improvement plan for the 2025-2026 school year.
The principals led most of those processes here, meeting with the Committee. We do have one point, one area, before I turn it over to them, 1.0, that was on page 5, projected enrollment. We have had, we had that really big year back five years ago, where we had an increase of 40, over 40 students, which caused us to have about an, and if you average, you know, the previous years, last five years, that was a growth of 5%. Well, you can see at the very bottom, the, the projected enrollment based on a 2.75 average annual growth, as we've gotten to where we don't, didn't have that big year in the mix, we're still averaging, we're trending up, it's just not as high of a percent as what we've seen in the past. So I think that was a rare year, but we are, it is still very positive that we're trending in the right direction, and it's getting, I would say that, that percentage is more accurate to what we've seen outside of that one year. So that was the, the numbers that I put into this, and then the rest was developed through the principals and the committee. So I'll turn it over to them to highlight any key parts that they feel that need to be mentioned.
I think I focused on pages 8 through 17. So essentially, we have our district goals on page 8. So we were looking at chronic absenteeism. One thing we discussed was, Katie, you were there, too, if you wanted. Our number of students absent hasn't necessarily trended, but our chronic absenteeism has trended. So the number of absences a student has to put them in chronic absenteeism has gone up 1% every year. So we don't like that. Obviously, we don't want that to keep trending upward. It is still below, you know, where the state's at, but that's one of our goals. Talked about our proficiency in ELA and in math, that's goal one. Goal two is the chronic absenteeism. Goal three is just creating a professional development team, continuing to work on that. And then the last one is the five-year improvement plan, which is on page 16, maybe? 15, somewhere in there, which is all the updates. I'm just making sure that we're continuing those. On page 10, that is the goal for just the junior and senior high. One thing we realized last year is, when we put this all together, we included the colony in with the elementary, but it didn't really work for the data because there are seventh and eighth graders out there, so then the eighth graders just weren't anywhere. So we've included our seventh and eighth graders under our junior, senior high, because they fit in with those seventh and eighth grade students when, when you're talking about overall numbers and how well they're doing. So that's an adjustment that we made from the previous year. On page 12, then, those are our, our growth goals for our elementary students when it comes to NWAA, that's our monitoring test that we use. And then on 14, we, Mitzi updated the waiter for administrative rule for Algebra I, and if you look on page 15, we're starting to sort of see our first cohort enter into their fifth year to see whether or not they're getting more credits. And so that's pending right now, but in 2021, 2022, those kids were eighth graders, there were four of them, four of them attempted Algebra I, four received the credit. Now, they are, all four, going for that fifth year of math, so that's good. They're all attempting that fifth year of math, which is what we wanted, but it's pending whether or not they'll receive it.
Right.
I can't imagine they would, but that's, that's kind of our rule for why we, why we do that, eighth grade as Algebra I, is to give those kids one more year to have one more math added. And so, so it looks to me like it's working, and so we just want to keep seeing those numbers be the same, so that's where we are kind of there. And then 15 would be the five-year district improvement plan, so those are just things that we're looking at for this school year, if you want to look at that, see if there's anything you need to add. And then 26, 7, 28, 29. And then 17 is the professional development plan.
And then with that plan, we did change some of the dates, because we would balance ours by September, we would have that, so to present to the board at that time, so then we would move that down through October.
We utilize our district report card quite a bit to come up with our goals, and those district report cards are not available to the public, we don't even see them until September, and then they're available to the public in October, so.
On page 5, why does that chart stop at 21, 22? Why do we have 22, 23, 24, and 5? Three years missing.
That's the data that we had, and I don't know where to access that data. So we have not updated that because I haven't been able to update the chart, so. Look at that for next year, I can look at it, we can amend it. Do you see that as being? I was tempted to delete it.
Why does, I just, so where'd the data come from, those years, those four?
Year one that we did this, we worked with a specialist to create it, and that was generated by that individual, and some other district reports from, for the district. I could reach out to that individual and see if they can point in the right direction, or we can delete it if they don't, if you don't see value in that information. Either one's fine.
I think you probably need to do one or the other, if it's not up to date, and-
The reason I didn't, I was worried it was gonna throw off the formatting for all the rest of the documents, because on this document, the, so the left-hand, where you got the Freeman Flyers, if the page numbers get a little out of whack, and then you got the successful, on page 3, the school success framework.
Oh, sure.
Well, that's, the formatting is a nightmare with this document. It's part of the reason why we couldn't. If there's anything else that you want to see, it could be deleted and replaced with it, or, you know, if you want.
So then, that individual who ever did that, did that for these four years, compiled all this information?
Yeah.
Is it the, is that a cost to the district at all?
No.
It's not? I think that we should, I mean, I always think more data's better.
Interesting data.
Yeah, and it, I think it is, especially, I mean, I think there's some, there's definitely some fields in there that are, I mean, I think, hopefully helpful. So I think it'd be reasonable if it's no cost to the district, if we could run that again, just to update.
Would you like to hold off on approving the plan, or would you like to approve it with, this will be you?
Yeah, I think that we, I, I mean, I would feel kind of loathing it with the caveat that that data will be updated. I mean, because there's nothing that we're gonna change it, the data's the data.
Was it Terry? Terry Gregory, was that the one that just created initially?
I'm not sure.
I have to go back and look at what was, I think she still works for the state.
The goals wouldn't, no.
The goals would be the same. I think it would be just, you know, update the, update the data that's available for demographics. Does that sound reasonable to everybody? Any other discussion?
This is over the discussion, we'll require a motion to approve the continuous school improvement plan for the 2025-2026 school year with the request to include updated demographic information. I'm just writing myself a note here. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Katie, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by David, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, executive session, we'll require a motion to enter executive session for the purpose that's set up for the California Law 1-2-1-25-2 (1), do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Cody, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by David. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries, and executive session 7:50 PM.
Motion carries, and executive session 7:50 PM.